Okay, we ready? All right, we'd like to call this meeting to order tonight. If we could all please rise and stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Smith, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to pass the, a motion for the agenda as presented tonight. Who would like to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Okay, Mr. Smith has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. George is seconded, and all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, at this time, we're going to move right along to the recognitions. Mr. Riley, I believe this is your turn, sir.
All right, Ms. Brown, if you can hear me, if you wouldn't mind, thank you very much. All right, so tonight's recognitions, every year, the State Department of Public Instruction issues a bunch of different awards that we give out. Normally, in December, we give out those banners that you see that talk about met academic growth, academic progress, things like that. Obviously, this year, those didn't happen because of COVID-19. However, one of the things that they did do, they recognized graduation rates. So we had two schools, two high schools, who received recognitions for that. On the screen, you see Ms. Brown with Pender Early College, and she is going to hoist her certificate, 100% graduation rate for the previous year. And then, I don't think Mr. Bracy was able to join us this evening. He was having a dental procedure done this afternoon. I think he might be a little out of it right now. But Topsail High School was also recognized. They had a graduation rate of 95.5% last year.
Oh, that's awesome.
So those two schools were honored. They both have certificates that we framed for them to be able to hang in their lobbies. No banners this year because of everything, but we wanted to acknowledge their success that they had graduating seniors last year. So congratulations, you guys.
Thank you. At this time, I do believe we have, do we have a public comment?
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
We do not have anybody for public comment.
We do not have anybody for public comment?
No, I'm sure.
No, okay. All right, we do not have anybody for public comment. Moving right along to the information agenda then. We'll move right on. Ms. Chestnut, Mr. Thompson?
We have Mr. Alan Thompson here from audit firm Thompson Price, Scott Adams, right? And he is going to give you the information on our 2020 audit.
Okay, well, good evening to everyone. In these two packets, there's smaller ones, the presentation summary, and that's the one I'm going to jump from. On page one, it says there are no significant audit findings. Page two, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated December 9th. We're unaware that management consulted with any outside accountants, auditors, et cetera, and there were really no other findings or issues, so it's a really good audit report. And if I can say this as well, while you flip to page four, the main thing you hire us as a firm to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements. We did issue an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report. On page four, what we attempt to do is pull out some of the numbers in the audit report, hopefully some of the numbers you'd have most interest in, and then put the four prior years' audit reports next to it so you get a much better feel for it in context. Total fund balance in your general fund is $4,225,000. If you go back to '16, that figure is $2,076,000. Restricted fund balance is $80,695,000. The unassigned is $3,024,000. Total general fund expenditures is $18,174,000. And these two percentages technically don't have any applicability to school systems, but we like to put them in there just to show the financial strength of the school district. You can see fund balance available as a percentage of general fund expenditures at 22.8%, and unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures at 16.64%. Revenues over and under expenses before transfers in the general fund is a positive $984,000, and the capital outlay is a negative $1,250,000. Other restricted fund is $350,000 positive. Child nutrition is $505,000 positive, and childcare service at $43,727,000. And then cash by fund, cash in the general fund is $4,487,000. You can see the positive trend upward over the five years presented. The cash in the capital outlay is $5,379,000. The other restricted is $787,000, and child nutrition at $2,056,000, and it's got a nice positive trend as well. Fund balance again is $4,225,000. Capital outlay is $5.3 million. Other restricted, $875,000. Child nutrition at $2,406,000. And net position at childcare service, $114,000. You see in that next section, a breakdown of your general fund revenues, the big one being the county allocation, and you can see where it's been trending up significantly as well. On page five, you see a breakdown by section of the general fund expenditures. And on the bottom of that page, the last two lines have the state public school fund revenues coming in at $60,674,000, and you can see where that's been coming up every year. And the federal grants portion has been up and down with a little bit of a downward trend from the fifth year back. On page six, just putting in chart form, some of these numbers we're just looking at. The blue total fund balance, definitely a nice increase, and restricted fund balance in red. On the bottom, you see the unassigned fund balance as a percentage, a very nice trend line. And then on page seven, over and under, analysis of revenues, over and under expenses before transfers. And you can see the only really one that's up and down a lot is your capital outlay, and that's just timing of when the expenditures are made. On the bottom, you see child nutrition's net position. And in '18, where you've got a dip, it's an accounting change and not a dip in revenue or expenses where you had a loss. I mean, that may sound counterintuitive, but there was an OPEB adjustment, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits Accounting Standard, that came out that required a big adjustment, had nothing to do with operations, and so it causes it to look like there's a significant loss in a year. There was, from an accounting standpoint. But if you were to look back at the page four and see where the cash in child nutrition steadily increased year over year, you would see it's just an accounting entry. On page eight, you see the cash balances in a pie chart and fund balances beside it, net position. And then you see underneath that the actual cash balances and fund balances, with total cash balances being $12,710,000. Total fund balance is net position at $12,807,000. And then on page nine, you see the Pender County allocation by year and the fines and forfeitures by year. And on page 10, a breakdown of your general fund revenues. Most of it coming, obviously, from the Pender County allocation. And then a breakdown of your general fund expenditures, with most of it going actually to direct system-wide support, which is education. And then finally, on page 11, you see the chart on the top with state public school fund allocations going up, and then the dip slightly in the federal grant fund allocations there. The big thing, again, you're hiring us to do is issue that opinion. We did issue a very good opinion, which is an unmodified report, quote, "clean" report. I'm happy to answer your questions, not just tonight, but if you go through the report and you've got questions of me, always feel free to give me a call at the office. If I'm not there, tell them to give you my cell number, and I'll get you an answer. But I very much appreciate you allowing our firm to do the audit report. We're very grateful to Ms. Betsy and all her staff for the work they do. And any questions you may have for me tonight, I'm happy to answer.
Board members, any questions? Comments? Does, looks great, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Those are Ms. Chestnut and her team. Awesome job. Thank you. All right, moving right along, Dr. Blumenwright? COVID-19 school operations update.
Madam Chair, members of the board, just to give you an update of a few things that are happening. So we're going to start with Ms. Shirley Steele. I believe that she's on the line, and she'll go over the Pender County numbers. Ms. Steele?
Good evening, everyone. Just to give you a quick update of where we are with cases, we're at 2,966 cases. Roughly 27 have recovered, about 90%. We do have 37 deaths, and 18 in the hospital. And unfortunately, we are seeing a trend in COVID cases and deaths. We do believe that is a result of the holidays. Today, our positive case rate was 18.5%, and we are the highest in the region. The state is at 14.7%, but that does change daily. And of course, the most troubling is the number of deaths we've had in the first week of January, and a lot of that is mostly due to our long-term care facility. We are, we have been vaccinating. We are, as of today, we have vaccinated 1,121 people in the county, and this consists of healthcare workers and residents who are 75 and older. We are scheduling COVID vaccination clinics on Tuesdays in Bergall and Thursdays in Hampstead, and this is all contingent upon us having vaccines. We're only getting about 400 vaccines a week, and we're trying to do 200 on each side of the county. As far as guidelines for vaccinating, we want to call today with the state, and we're going to have possibly some changing guidelines based on federal recommendations. So this guidance that we were given today, that's at 1:00 today. But just to give you an example of where school staff would file, they would actually be, we're actually in Phase 1B right now, but we're in Group 1, and that's anyone age 75 and older. When we move to, they're in Phase 1B, but move to Group 2, that will consist of, we will be able, let me start again, we will be able to vaccinate teachers and support staff who are over the age of 50. When we move to Group 3 in that phase, it will be all teachers and support staff. So that's kind of where we are in the phases. When we change phases, it will be based on what the state will give us to go ahead, but it still is going to be a county-by-county decision, because we have to vaccinate all of the people in 1A and all the people in 1B, Group 1, before we can move to Group 2. We have about 7,500 residents in Pender County who are 75 and older, and but, and like I said, we've only vaccinated about 1,100, but that also includes some frontline healthcare workers. Also, the vaccine is not county-specific. We cannot turn around, turn away anyone who comes from another county, even though we do encourage them to go to the county in which they live. As far as us moving to that next phase, we have no idea right now. Like I said, we had over 7,500, and of course, you know, everybody's not going to want the vaccine, but we're still getting bombarded every day with calls. We are trying to get a system set up at our EOC once we get call takers. We're also looking at a new phone system that will allow us to have callers in a queue. We are looking into that today, and hopefully we'll have something set up pretty soon. We are taking names and numbers of individuals who meet the 75 years and older criteria or who are a healthcare worker who meets Group 1A criteria. We are taking those names and phone numbers and calling them as vaccine becomes available. As far as the schools concerned, investigations in the school that's still being handled by your trained school staff, your lead school nurse and others. And they are doing the investigations and passing the information on to us. We are trying to help with quarantine orders, excuse me, isolation orders for those individuals who have tested positive for COVID. We are still having our, we've got our calls down to weekly now, and we're still sharing a spreadsheet with them as to the name of the individuals we come across who are positive, make sure that the school is aware of that. I think that is it for my update. If I have answered all the questions about the COVID vaccine, I think I did. I am available for any other question. One more thing. I was asked about how we would get the information out when we change phases. Well, first of all, the news will broadcast it, but also, we put it on our website, it's on our, and on our Facebook site.
Okay, hi, Ms. Steele. This is Beth Burns. I just had one question for you. First of all, thank you for the information about the vaccine rollout, but I was wondering, there's still a lot of questions about what the protocol is whenever you're, whenever you go into quarantine, and then if you become isolated. Could you kind of give us, like, the timeline and everything as per, like, if you, if you, say, if you are positive for COVID? Could you kind of give us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we follow CDC and DHHS guidelines for that. And it used to be, if you are positive case, that guidance has not changed the whole time. You are isolated for 10 days. Your first day starts either on the day of symptoms, or if you're one of those individuals who do not have symptoms, your first day starts on the day of your test date. And it goes for a full 10 days, and then on day 11, you are released. Quarantine is for anyone who is a close contact to a case, and that is something that your trained school staff have been determining when, say, a student or teacher becomes positive in the classroom, they determine who those close contacts are. And those close contacts normally are defined as greater, less than six feet apart and for more than 15 minutes. So quarantine, those rules have changed. We have one of three ways to quarantine someone. The first rule is that if the individual is completely without symptoms, they can get tested on day 5, and then on day 7, if they still do not have any symptoms, then on day 8, they are free to be released. The other variable is that if someone chooses not to get tested, they will go a full 10 days, and as long as they do not have any symptoms, on day 11, they are free to go on about their business. The other variable is that if someone does have symptoms at some point during that period of time and does not get tested, they are to be quarantined for a full 14 days, released on day 15. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, it does. Thank you.
So it all just depends on the individual and what they choose to do.
Ms. Steele, I don't know if you've seen or not, UNC and Duke did a study of COVID transmission in schools. They picked 11 districts statewide. It came out yesterday. It was released to the news channels around Raleigh and that area. I don't think that the local channels have picked it up yet, but they said in their study that transmission through schools was pretty much nonexistent. Do you see that in our school system here, those same kind of results?
That is what we have seen. Now, I know recently, we have had a couple of exposures, and your school staff may be able to speak more about that, but I can say that for the majority of it, we have, we have seen some, but we did not, have not seen a lot of school transmission.
Thank you.
And a lot of times, children are also without symptoms, so that creates a problem also. And we are firm believers that if you can social distance and wear masks, transmission is really minimal.
All right, any other questions? Board members? Mr. Smith, any questions? You're good. All right, thank you, Ms. Steele.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say one more thing. The schools have done, the school staff have done an incredible job, I think, in Pender County schools of getting on top of the case investigation and sending those people home that need to be quarantined. So my hat's off to them. It's been a great working relationship, and they have really done a great job.
Well, I'd just like to add on, tag on to what you just said, that I've been hearing from people in the community, and it's very obvious that you guys and the school system are working so well together, and that makes a difference. You don't hear about that everywhere else, and so we greatly appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you to everybody, school staffs, and to you guys at the Health Department. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
To move forward from this slide, this is, of course, the weekly posting that Mr. Riley is doing. As you can see, this is from last week, 104 to 110, and of course, updated on Monday at 10:00 a.m. And last week, we had a total of 21 confirmed cases that were positive, and then 131 that were quarantined due to exposure. So that's, I think, touches base on what you had asked about with Ms. Burns regarding kind of those processes. So in charting it week by week, these are, of course, the positives, and of course, last week, you can see, Week 24 was last week since our very first process has started in August 5th. You can see the 21. Of note is, of course, this week, as of today, Tuesday, there's 21 cases just, you know, as of today. So for the week, and that, of course, is updated frequently. So it's something just to be mindful of, and the red line, of course, is the trend Now, I'm going to turn it over really quickly to Mr. LaFon, real quick, to discuss any operations information that you might find interesting.
Good evening, board members. From an operations standpoint, honestly, there's not much that's changed from, you know, over the course of the year. We're still in very good shape as far as supplies go, and getting things out to the schools, and the system that's in place is working well. The buildings are in good shape. We're having a pretty smooth transition to, from our custodial services. A lot of, a lot of the folks are the same folks, so the, the protocols that were in place are still in place. They have responded well when we've needed them. And so, you know, basically, there's not a whole lot new to tell you unless you have any questions. Thank you.
And I'll just go over the transportation information real quick for Mr. Smith. Of course, the second semester routes had started on January 7th when students came back. Be aware that buses are still following the Plan B guidelines for buses that are mixed elementary and middle that are shared. And Mr. Smith wanted to make clear that the elementary and middle school buses are very quickly reaching the maximum capacity allowed under the current guidelines. And so right now, in order to kind of mediate for that, they're doing double routes. But ultimately, if we start reaching some of those larger capacities, then that's going to affect other processes too. And so that kind of details going into the classroom configuration considerations and information. So there's obviously the need to keep an eye on bus and classroom numbers across all levels. We are, of course, closely watching the middle school enrollment and the returning virtual students to ensure compliance with the Plan B guidelines regarding physical spacing, et cetera. And Dr. Akin can speak more to that if he wishes, if you.
Nothing really has changed since December. Elementary under Plan A, high school and middle school under Plan B. They have worked, the high school principals, of course, were under the three cohorts. Middle school's been keeping a very close eye. We worried about two schools in particular going into the winter break and those were Surf City Middle and Topsail Middle. Dr. Lee has toured both buildings along with the principals, checking every single space, trying to be creative about any scheduling needs. Right now, both schools are making it work. Surf City Middle has enrolled a number of new students. That's been balanced a little bit with students who have chosen to go online. Topsail Middle, I believe, has now enrolled somewhere between 17 and 18 new students just for this semester. So popularity is awesome, but it does bring some of its challenges. But Mr. Lawrence and his, his team have been working really hard. We're looking at some creative class scheduling. They're looking at how to use some space flexibly with the staff that they have. As of right now, they're making it work. I will say that any changes to the schedule of cohorts are the absolute last resort. Our middle school principals want to try to keep the schedule that they've had all year. They actually had a meeting this morning with Dr. Lee. The feeling was very much that we're starting to get into a routine, a pattern. The students and the staff are getting to that place where they're in a rhythm and we really don't want to disrupt that if we can at all, possibly not. So all things are rolling at this point. The two places we were worried about are the two places that are tight, but we're doing everything we can to keep it the way it is. And the principals would like to do the same, keep it the way it is if we can.
Talking about double routes, have we, how many routes would you say we've gone up that we've had to make double routes throughout the county? Yes, that would be good. Do you mind? Thank you. Hey.
Good evening. How are you?
We were just asking about double routes. So how many routes have we increased to go to double from what we had in the fall?
Um, we've increased, Topsail Elementary is still running about the same amount of doubles they have. We've, Cape Fear is not having to run any doubles yet. We've not had to add doubles, but it's, it's coming as more kids start riding. How we combat, combated that earlier was we did add like an extra bus at Topsail Elementary. There's an extra bus out of the South Topsail, so, and also Cape Fear. The numbers are getting very close. The second, you know, the Plan B students will come again Thursday, Friday, we're looking at those numbers. So the doubles have, that's how we're going to combat the issue. We've already working on plans, you know, of how we could double and keep the times down. So, but that's where we're at. There's not been any doubles added that weren't already in place, but they are likely to come.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
That does. I was just, was curious. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Next item.
Next item. So the good news is, is that Duke Energy Foundation gave us a large donation. They donated from some of their local budget funds and directly from their foundation funds and we have been awarded basically a gift, a grant of $15,000. It was unexpected. It was unlooked for, but it is greatly appreciated and we, of course, will put it to good use for students. So all of you just need to be aware of that.
That's awesome.
It is.
Mr. LaFon?
Cindy, what was that?
I was just moving on to the next item. Mr. LaFon's up.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm sorry. I thought you said my name. Sorry about that.
You're good. You're good.
Are y'all hearing me okay?
We are.
Okay, good.
Hey, board members, this is an information item for you. Um, we are in the process of trying to upgrade the service fleet for Pender County schools. This is for a general use vehicle. We have a Nissan Pathfinder. It's $26,119.55, which would come from the capital outlay budget. It will replace the very old and very decrepit Dodge Durango that we have. And if you have any questions.
How long have we had that Dodge Durango? I'm just curious.
Top of my head, I do not know what the, what year it is, but I, I know it's at least 10 or 12 years old. I mean, it has to be.
We have had that a long time.
So, thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Chestnut?
Unfortunately, the reports that's in there was last month's report because the day that Dr. Blum and Wright needed him, I was at the doctor. So I just will tell you that and I will get them updated for next month. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
I just got a question. It's not even really having anything to do with it before.
Oh, okay.
We used to get a lot of.
The charter school students, do we know how many we, how many we're paying for this year?
Yeah, um, gosh, it's a little, I think it's a little over 300. I have the exact figure in my office, but I think it's, it's a few less than we had last year, actually. But I can send it to you.
That's fine. That'll work. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, it doesn't let, there's anything else for information agenda? Moving along to the consent agenda, have all the board members had a chance to review the consent agenda?
Yeah, there's some old minutes.
Yeah, what, what, good question.
Where was the old minutes that, what happened? Oh, you've got to share, Mike.
To be quite truthful and honest, the old minutes were in note form on my laptop and because of everything else that is on my plate, it's taken me a while to catch up and that's about half of the minutes that I still have left to do. So we still have about 15 or so more that I've got to get through to close out the 2020 year. So working on those now. So hopefully you'll have the rest of them next month.
Well, the good thing about now, compared to what it used to be, used to, we didn't have the recorded meetings. So now if somebody's got a question, they can always go back.
Yeah, they can just watch back.
To the minutes get approved.
The video on YouTube, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right. No other questions, concerns? No other questions or concerns? Do we have someone who would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. At this time, it's a rather short meeting tonight for all of those of you who are listening in and watching, so that doesn't happen very often. So I guess we'll enjoy the moment. At this time, we're going to ask for any comments from board members, starting with Ms. Burns.
I, yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to pass it this time. Nothing really much to say except happy new semester and everyone's doing a great job and those COVID numbers look great.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
No comments.
Okay. Mr. George?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple. We're missing our superintendent tonight. We wish him well. Hopefully he'll be back with us soon. Also, I'd like to send out a special thanks to school nurses, I think, are really working tremendously hard, a lot harder than I think any of us really realize that they would and longer hours and weekends and Sundays and, and I really appreciate that for what they're doing. Also, the other, rest of the staff members that are working weekends, we're getting texts and emails and stuff at all hours of the day and night during the weekends, which is appreciated also, but I, that's, I feel bad that you're taking time away from your families and things that you need to do to do that for us. But we do thank you for it and hopefully soon we'll start seeing the downhill side of this mountain. We've been climbing, it seems like, for three years. It's only been, what, nine, 10 months, nine months now? But I swear, it's been a long nine months. But thank you all. Thank you to the teachers and staff at schools that are struggling every day to get the kids in and out. We honestly, truly appreciate everything that's being done. That's all I have.
I'd just like to just make a, to let everyone know of something coming up. There is another substitute teacher class coming up, February 1st, if I'm not mistaken. The lady who's in charge of that at Cape Fear Community College, I actually saw her today and she's like, if you could just put a plug in for that. I think the classes are on Mondays and Wednesdays, am I right? So we meet at Bargile Campus? Or is it Tuesday, Wednesday? I don't know. You can call and you can ask. And so many of you have reached out and have actually taken that class and just so you know, we are all appreciative. It has taken our whole community. It's taken so many of you who said, you know what? I kind of think I might want to substitute teach. Let me go try that. And so many I'm seeing on a regular basis and say, I'm showing up every time I'm asked to come substitute. I enjoy it. I love helping them out at the schools. So if you think that's something you'd be interested in, please call Cape Fear Community College. I know that the next class is starting on February 1st. I can't remember which days of the week, but there is a $75 fee, I think, to take the class and you have to have that class in order to, to become a substitute teacher for the school system. Did I say that right? Is everything I said correct on that? Okay. Secondly, I would like just to add what, to what Mr. George just said. As a parent, as a grandparent, as a person in the community, we know how hard you guys are all working. And like he said, we're getting emails and text messages and we see people on the weekends and, and we just want to say thank you. You guys take away from your families many times to do for everyone else and we just really, 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 really appreciate it. So thanks to all of you for all that you do. It's a hard job. It's, it's a thankless job many, many times. I also know that a lot of our parents who are listening right now, I know from, I've heard from schools that a lot of you really stepped up at Christmas and you did some really awesome things for your teachers and for your teacher assistants and for all those other teachers, like your specialist teachers that we don't think about. And that meant a lot to them, even if it was, we gave all of our car lot people fuzzy socks. And for some reason, fuzzy socks with the little alloy in that, that just made a huge difference to them and just made them feel good. So just thanks for all that you guys are doing for all of our school employees out there. On another note, I would just like to take a moment. When I was at Central Office, there was a lady who I met who would always smile, who would always greet me, and her name was Ms. Brenda Johnson. And she has passed away over the holidays and I'm speaking for myself and I hope for all the other board members. When I came on to the board, she was also here to greet us all the time. She always made sure I had a Diet Coke in the fridge just for me. I think some of our other board members loved their Diet Sun Drops and she'd have that. She was always positive. She's also experienced some grief several months ago in her own family and then to know that she has also left us over the holiday season. I just want to say that I will forever be grateful for all that Ms., this lady did for me and was always so nice and happy and I never really saw her down. I don't think I ever really saw her sad or despondent about anything, but just, we'd like just the family to know how much we're thinking about them at this time. And I have no further comments at this time. Oh, yeah, Mr. Hall. Sorry, forgot about him. Do you have any comments, Mr. Hall?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair, I know Dr. Hill is not here tonight, but he did want me to make a couple of quick notes in his place on the report from the superintendent. First off, a thanks to everyone who worked early graduation, the mid-year graduations that we had last week. Big success. Seems like a lot of the families were very, very appreciative of the efforts that the schools made to make sure that their students still got their moment to shine and, and celebrate finishing up their high school journey. Did want to note that it is School Board Appreciation Month, which is why you guys have the portfolios that we wanted to give you to represent the, the school district with. We wanted to say thank you for all the work that you do for our students and helping guide this district. We really do appreciate it. And last but not least, if you can't see it on the screen, happy birthdays to the chairwoman. So congratulations on being 21 for the third time.
21. I'd like to go on record with that. 21. Thank you so much. The flowers are beautiful. I'm sorry they're not up for everyone to see, but they were very large and I couldn't see Mr. Blum and Wright and everyone else, so I had to move them back, but thank you guys. I appreciate it. And thanks to all of you for recognizing all of us as board members.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're going to, unless there's anything else, we're going to move into the closed session portion of this meeting. Someone would like to make the motion so that we can go into closed session, please?
Subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A1A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115C-319 and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee, the board will go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143318A1, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 123G and North Carolina General Statute 115C-402.
Mr. George has made the motion that we go into closed session. Do we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns is seconding. All in favor, say aye.
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 At this time, we are going into closed session.
Okay, we're going to reconvene. Do I have a board member who'd be willing to make a motion that we approve the HR agenda? Oh wait a minute, do we have to come out and then come back in? I can never remember that. Do I have someone like to make a motion that we come out of closed session and come back into general?
I'll make a motion that we come out of closed session and go back into general session.
Okay, Mr. Hollis made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. George is second and all in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous. Now, do we have a board member who'd like to make a motion that we approve the HR report as presented?
I'll make a motion we approve the HR report as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Smith has made the motion, Ms. Burns has seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. Do we have a board member who would be willing to make a motion that we exit out of our meeting tonight?
May I make a motion with adjourn?
Do we have a board member who's second?
Second motion.
Mr. George has made the motion, Mr. Smith has seconded the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.